Hi, good evening, everyone. Uh, starting the meeting for Wednesday, January 5th. To read a little statement, this meeting is being recorded in accordance with the government order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty. Real-time public participation and comment can be addressed to planning board utilizing utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application will allow users to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the chair via the question-answer function submitted text comments will be read into record. For those of you joined by phone, press star nine. If you want to ask a question, please raise your hand. A copy of this recording will be on the city's webpage. They will skip the end. There's no vote tonight. We'll save that for February. Okay, um, just do a roll call for the board members. James Sweeney.
Here.
Larry Hassan.
Here.
Samantha Joyce.
Here.
Rita Das.
Present.
And Tony Gonzalez is present. Okay, Rob, the floor is yours.
And I am Rob May, Director of Planning and Economic Development. Joining us today is Pam Gurley, uh, my administrative assistant. And, um, leading the presentation is Emily Ennis of Ennis and Associates, uh, or Ennis Associates. And, uh, we have been working on a master plan for the area around Good Samaritan Hospital, an area that we're now calling Lovett Brook, um, for the past nine months, uh, it seems. Um, we have had a professional planning group working with us uh, over the ti- uh, over the years and uh, or over the time. And, um, uh, you know, uh, ha- have, um, made a couple of public presentations. And so this is, um, sort of the next hurdle in the process of of getting it adopted as the official plan, master plan for this area. And, uh, I would like to turn the presentation over to Emily, um, who should be able to share her screen and, um, walk us through a quick presentation. Well, quickish.
Quickish. Thank you very much, Rob. Uh, I appreciate it. Um, first of all, to all of you, Happy New Year. It's a pleasure to be with you again. Uh, we had presented the existing conditions and some initial thoughts on this plan back in October. So it's nice to be back to you with the draft plan for your review. Um, I am going to just run through some of the work that we've done since October. And, uh, I'm also joined by my colleague Dan Murphy from Ty and Bond, who's going to talk about some of the traffic implications. And of course, Amanda Gregoire from Mass Development has been the lead person at their end, um, keeping an eye on this project. So just want to recognize that she's here as well. So with that, um, talked a little bit, uh, as a reminder of the existing land uses. I'm going to talk about the development scenarios that we looked at, what it means that there's scenarios and why we have them that way. Talk about some of the recommendations and then the key next steps. And you can see here, the Mass Development team and also the consultant team, Dan and I have been joined by many people over the course of this plan. Um, you heard, uh, at the presentation in October, you heard some of the market conditions that, uh, RKG had assisted us with. We're not going to be talking about those today, but just wanted to call out their, um, participation in this. So in terms of existing land uses, just as a reminder, this is the Lovett Brook area. Um, you can see that we're talking about obviously the Good Samaritan Medical Center in the middle with some other medical office buildings here in purple. We have some single-family houses scattered, uh, along the edge of Oak Street and then one kind of in the sort of the middle, uh, western part of the site. Lot of restaurant and retail over on the northwest of the site, an office building to the east, and then the footprint of a former movie theater that had been vacant for some time before it was finally demolished. So that gives you a picture of the conditions. Uh, as part of the presentation in October, we looked into the existing physical conditions, um, including the, uh, trans- transportation and traffic conditions, uh, environmental conditions. Obviously, we have Lovett Brook running through the center of the site with some wetlands present and an existed wooded area. Um, we looked at the demographics, uh, initially, and this part is really talking about having understood those existing conditions. What is it possible to do with the site? We had done, um, quite a bit of public outreach in terms of a three-part online survey to get initial thoughts, uh, a public meeting, and then a post-public meeting survey to get some, uh, thoughts on that. So we're now able to show you some of what we've been looking at in three dimensions as well as two dimensions. So just to orient you, you'll be seeing this view throughout. Um, the taller building on the site is the Good Samaritan Medical Center. The restaurant I retail I mentioned are in the the top of the presentation over to the right. This vacant sort of, uh, areas, the parking that's associated with, um, these uses, but also the site of the mo- former movie theater. You can see the Harbor One Bank in the foreground here. This is Route twenty-four. Oops, um, this, uh, this white line. Uh, sorry, mouse got a little away from me there. You can see some of the existing multifamily buildings along the far right here and then the two medical office buildings in the center. And then on the other side of Oak Street from those multifamily buildings is some of the existing single family. There is a church right here, just on the corner of Oak Street and, uh, where Route twenty-one crosses. And then, uh, to the near ground, um, uh, the left is Westgate Mall on the other side of Route twenty-four. So we looked at three scenarios during this process. Uh, one scenario, the scenario I'm going to show you today is a phase scenario. So you'll see phases one A, one B, and one C. Uh, we think that this is the most likely scenario over the kind of the twenty-year life of the plan, and I'll talk a little bit about that as we go through it. We also looked at scenarios two and three, which were two alternates for a full build-out. However, the market conditions for scenario one are such that without certain changes, and we'll talk about those in the recommendations, these conditions are already unlikely to happen. Certainly in the near term, some of them may not happen until something like ten-plus years. Uh, we felt that scenarios two and three, which we investigated as a full build-out, were very, very unlikely to happen in the near term. So they were useful for our study to see what could happen, but they're not going forward as part of this master plan. So development scenario one A, um, the genesis, as you may remember from the presentation in October, was really to look at life sciences in Brockton coming out of the MIT study that students at DUSP, the Urban Planning, uh, Program had, uh, considered, uh, both Brockton and Worcester. And so that was the genesis of it. So scenario one A reflects that. It looks at the site of the former movie theater as a potential new life sciences manufacturing area. And the market study indicated that there was a potential for Brockton to become a leader in that, given existing life sciences components, including Good Samaritan, including your excellent STEM program at the high school and the thought of more life sciences manufacturing working its way down the Route twenty-four corridor. There's already some. So this scenario responds to that by adding that manufacturing building and also looking at additional office and lab. And if you remember, the, um, uh, projection for office and lab or office alone was not strong initially, but we think, given, um, the presence of Good Sam, the presence of the presence of existing medical, including Quest Diagnostics, that that could be possible in the near term. You'll also start to see, um, some other possibilities for uses. So, uh, we looked at, given the existing mixed use across the street from Oak Street, that over time, the, um, single-family homes could translate into a mixed use with retail on the ground floor and residential above. Um, the idea for that was to allow some of the retail and residential that's here now to begin to move closer to the Harbor One Bank, closer to the Good Samaritan Medical Center. In other words, closer to potential clients. Um, one of the things that we heard is from the employee survey is that not a lot of people, not a lot of employees on site are using these because they have to walk to them and the current walking conditions aren't great. It's one of the reasons you'll also see the beginnings of a wider path along Oak Street with trees on both sides to allow for a more comfortable, uh, walking experience. You're going to see that expand in the next few scenarios. In three dimensions, this is what it looks like, a three-story building for the office and lab. Most manufacturing buildings are one-story buildings, so you see that, um, here. We did talk, uh, with our colleagues at Ty and Bond on this project about the likely sizes for a manufacturing building, um, because some of the manufacturing buildings for life sciences are quite large. They're not likely to fit on the site. We're looking at the smaller aspects of life sciences manufacturing. And then here in the yellow and red, you see the mixed-use building. As we look at the other scenarios, just remember, blue is office and lab, brown is manufacturing, yellow is residential, and red is mixed use. That will help you read the site. And again, you can see that the heights here are responsive to the heights on the other side. And in fact, off this picture, the existing multifamily is in fact even higher than what we're proposing, again, as a development concept here. Now, the second scenario again allows us to test, uh, the the concepts of what this would move forward in time. So if you think of scenario, uh, one A as being something in the three-to-five-year range, um, scenario one B could be in the, uh, five-to-ten-year range. So you see here, we're adding more manufacturing. We're, uh, increasing the mixed use along here again as a test to see what would happen to the site. Um, allowing more mixed use here allows much, if not all, of the existing retail and restaurant to move into either of these buildings, or we've suggested, uh, two restaurant pads here. Now you start to see that path I mentioned earlier gets to be expanded because we now have more, uh, development happening on site. That development, the value of that is captured, allows us to extend the improvements, not just along Oak Street and Oak Street Extension, but further into the site. So this scenario keeps the manufacturing in the office that you saw before, adds new manufacturing, adds these restaurant pads with potential outdoor eating, which obviously has become extremely popular uh, during the pandemic, is one of the positive things that's likely to last for us. And then these connecting trails through a daylighted brook, um, and some restored wetlands. At the moment, when Lovett Brook comes onto our site, it actually comes underneath the building, the seven-eleven building, which also contains a laundromat, is in fact over Lovett Brook. It's channelized through here, so it and the wetlands really aren't working together. Um, in scenario one B, we start to see the ability to further address that and make it much more of a natural resource for both the existing residents um, and potential new residents and new employees. In three dimensions, you see, again, here's the office and the manufacturing from one A. New manufacturing here. You start to see the trees coming in, the new mixed-use, um, uh, buildings, the new restaurant pads. I should add, and we'll talk a little bit more about it, that the existence of more uses on site allows us to put a traffic signal in plan. You see it at Lindell Avenue. Now, Newland Avenue and Lindell Avenue are both paper streets. Um, they've been in existence as paper streets at least since the nineteen thirties. They've never actually been built out. So right now, um, Harbor One Bank employees go out through a driveway that passes past the church properties. Um, in this scenario, we would be able to create Lindell Avenue, signalize it, and that would allow for, um, uh, traffic movements here. And Dan will talk more about that as we get to, um, a more detailed slide on that. So one C, and this would be ten to twenty years or possibly plus, adds just another office lab here. You can see that, um, adds a few more amenities for the existing medical office in this area, a little plaza area there. Uh, thinks about part, we think about, um, additional parking in this area here. The addition of the office lab also allows us to continue the rest of the street, the trees along Oak Street and Oak Street Extension. So we're able to take the development on this site and start thinking about how does that impact the existing neighborhood on the other side. So in addition to creating a nice walking trails in this site for everybody, this is all would all be publicly accessible, we're able to, um, add additional trees on the other side, making for a much more pleasant environment for people coming across. Again, you see the signalization there. Um, and again, something that Dan will talk about is, uh, improvements along this entire area and into this intersection that could happen as we contemplate more development in this area. You get to see it again in three dimensions, so it just adds this existing office building back in to really connect Harbor One and the medical office building at that point. And again, this would be ten years out. So we use scenarios to de- to to test what is possible. We know from our market studies that without changes, um, uh, in policy and, uh, without significant marketing, that we're unlikely to see any of this happen. The the market demand studies that RKG did were built on, uh, an extrapolation of past trends. But there is the opportunity with the state's focus on life sciences, with the city's focus on those and also on housing, to really rethink how this could be an amenity for, uh, existing employers, existing businesses, and future employers and businesses, as well as existing residentials nearby and, um, in the area. In this, we see, uh, what the change in demand would look like. So the change in square footage, if you start out with the existing conditions, this is over time what we're showing. Again, we're not expecting all of that to be absorbed immediately. Through scenario one A would be a three-to-five-year scenario, one B, five-to-ten, and one C, ten-plus. And that relies on the physical improvements coming in, the public infrastructure improvements coming in, and change in market values, uh, and demand over time based on the changes in policy. So the benefits we see are primarily initially jobs for Brockton residents going in with the, um, uh, the new manufacturing and the new office and lab. Thus, with those jobs going in, also an increase in the tax, commercial tax base and therefore revenue for the city. We see traffic improvements coming in in scenarios one B and one C, because that's where the development that's coming in can pay, start to pay for those traffic improvements. Um, one B and one C also start really creating new locations for the existing businesses. One of the things that we've noticed is that most of them are not actually visible from either North Pearl Street or Oak Street. People have to know that they exist in order to come there, uh, to to come to those businesses. With the addition of, uh, mixed use right along Oak Street, those businesses would now be far more visible to, uh, both their existing patrons and new clients and customers. Um, it also opens up outdoor dining opportunities near the brook, uh, with plaza. So it's a much nicer space. Most of the, there's three restaurants on that space now, in that area now. They don't have the ability to do outdoor dining in, um, an attractive fashion. Creates new recreational areas for residents, employees that I've talked about, and it improves safety. One of the things that we heard in, um, the, uh, uh, online surveys was that people were deeply concerned about traffic, but they were also concerned about walking and biking safety and also physical safety. Um, with the jumble of buildings there, uh, it's not particularly well-lit. Uh, people were concerned about their safety there. Or reorganizing the buildings, um, adding lighting, adding, uh, uh, accessible pathways really addresses that. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dan to talk a little bit about the traffic improvements and including, uh, access management. So Dan.
All right. Thank you, Emily. I appreciate it. Um, so there was a traffic analysis that was completed. The study area intersections included Route twenty-seven or Reynolds Highway at North Pearl Street, the Good Samaritan West entrance on North Pearl Street, Oak Street Extension at North Pearl Street, River Road at North Pearl Street, and the North driveway for Good Sam. And, uh, twenty-twenty-one traffic volumes were collected. Um, due to the pandemic, they were calibrated against historic volumes available from Mass DOT and other sources. Uh, analysis was completed and found that the intersections and approaches generally operated in excess and an acceptable level of service D or better, uh, with a few exceptions. One was the Oak Street Extension and North Pearl Street intersection uh, operated a level of service F in the AM and PM peak. Uh, and the other was the, uh, west entrance to Good Sam. Uh, vehicles taking a left out of Good Sam in the PM peak, uh, experienced a level of service E. Now, looking ahead, we put out a seven-year horizon and did a twenty-twenty-eight no-build analysis, which looks ahead to see what traffic conditions might look like if the project does not happen. Uh, a one percent annual growth rate was included in that. And, uh, the, they, they stayed pretty much the same. They were close to the same with the exception that the westbound movement out of Good Sam went from a level of service E to a level of service F. And the, uh, the intersection of Oak Street and North Pearl Street, you know, fell a little bit worse. Um, so the recommendations in the analysis basically were that, uh, as the project develops and as the area is redeveloped, the Pearl at Oak Street Extension intersection should be improved and expanded to include turn lanes. Um, as Emily suggested, the signalization of Lindell Ave and Oak Extension, if that parcel in that area gets developed as it looks like it may be. And then signal and intersection improvements at the Westerly Side Drive and the North Side Drive, as well as pedestrian improvements to Oak and Oak Street Extension Corridor. Uh, what this slide shows in the top image is the, uh, the black bars represent existing driveways or curb-cut openings. And there are existing seventeen driveways or roads where cars enter and exit Oak Street, uh, creating conflict with other vehicles, creating conflict with pedestrians that might be attempting to, uh, to walk down Oak Street Extension to Oak Street. Um, the lower image shows that, uh, with access management implementation, we can reduce those conflict points. We can reduce the number of points by which vehicles are entering or exiting, uh, Oak Street. We brought that down to, uh, a number of seven. And again, much of the traffic can be routed through the the Lindell Avenue intersection, which may be signalized. And, uh, a fewer conflict points along the corridor. The other thing Emily pointed out was that, uh, this also provides you the opportunity to provide a more continuous pedestrian walkway. And, you know, boarded by trees and and trees between the pedestrian and the vehicular traffic i- is something that improves the level of service for pedestrians. Exactly what the improvements at the Oak Street Extension and North Pearl Street and other intersections might look like would be dependent upon an eventual, um, build analysis, um, which would be done in the next phase, once we have a clearer picture of what exactly the development of the site would look like. Um, so that's pretty much the, uh, the traffic analysis in a nutshell. And I'll send it back to Emily.
Great. Thank you very much, Dan. So I also wanted to, uh, zoom in a little bit on the, uh, proposed amenities amenities for the site. So, uh, looking here, uh, you can see that wider sidewalk with the trees on either side, that's that yellow pathway. This is really focused on those two, um, uh, retail pads or restaurant pads, um, with plazas for outdoor dining. You can see Lovett Brook coming through. Again, uh, so right about here-ish is roughly where the existing seven-eleven building is, uh, with the laundromat in it. And then these yellow walking trails that would be in through this restored area. And I, I talked about the fact that this would be, uh, a much better environment for, as I said, existing and, um, future residents, employees, uh, businesses. Um, but it's also important to note that, uh, adding trees, uh, adding more green to this area, removing some of the invasive species, daylighting the brook, uh, considering the wetlands, is really important to address the environmental health of the area and also to address climate change. Uh, brooks such as Lovett Brook and their associated wetlands are very useful for stormwater management, um, preventing flooding. Uh, so, you know, trying to daylight those and restore them to their natural functions is really important. And of course, street trees to reduce the impact of the heat island effect on the local residents, make it much more attractive to get physical activity, uh, is important as well. So really, these become amenities that attract employers to the site because they know that there's a place that's attractive to employees and of course, it's great to have for residents. Now, when people start to see conceptual plans and they see three-D blocks, they get worried that there are projects that are going to happen very soon. So I just want to reinforce that this is a, as, uh, um, a land use plan for the site. It tells us the direction we'd like to go in. Um, uh, you know, any land use will tell a community, um, the direction they would like to go in for this area. Um, and but it's not a specific project that's going to happen immediately. There's a lot of things that have to happen in place for even one of these buildings to, uh, come through. And that's where the recommendations of this land use plan come in. So the first is continuing to reach out to critical partners. So thinking about the life sciences community in terms of developers, brokers, uh, companies, employees, workers, uh, reaching out to all of those people, thinking about what's going on in the downtown. Uh, so the focus of the MIT study was initially on the downtown. There are buildings available there that would be perfect for startups where Lovett Brook area could be an expansion site. So thinking about how that strategy would play out. And then really thinking about the training and workforce needs for the residents of Brockton and what needs to happen there in order to ensure that there's a solid employee base to attract employers. And as I said, your, your STEM program and your high school gets rave reviews, uh, for already having that in place. Then, in terms of thinking about new development, thinking about who those critical partners are and engaging them, using the components of this land use plan to market properties, to market the idea in the area to companies, um, so that, you know, they get interested and involved. And we've heard a couple of things through the grapevine, um, that there could be some interest in terms of the, uh, working group that we, that we have. Um, thinking about, uh, and our main next step, uh, at this point is an urban renewal plan that would allow the, uh, Brockton Redevelopment Authority to have some of the tools that are necessary for the site to address the vacancy of the, um, uh, particularly of the site that had the movie theater on it, but also this, uh, ability to do the public infrastructure improvements that we, um, uh, showed you on this plan. Um, and thinking about the design standards for any future build here and, uh, zoning changes that would be necessary to implement it. Thus, changing the zoning, uh, another recommendation to allow for those uses that we see are appropriate for the site and creating a district improvement financing program. I mentioned the idea of capturing the value from new buildings, from new development, and then spreading that out, not just to the site, but into the neighborhood itself. A district improvement financing plan would assist with that. Talked a little bit about the projects for daylighting Lovett Brook, developing those pathways, including wayfinding signage and informational signage, uh, so people know what they're looking at, thinking about the habitat of the area, uh, and restoring the wetlands and developing a revegetation plan. And then finally, as Dan mentioned, uh, earlier, the idea of a transportation improvement plan, figuring out how best to address. And I, and I just want to stress how much we heard from people that they were concerned about existing traffic problems in the area, never mind adding new development. In our case, we're recommending that the plan be done so that the new development can help mitigate, um, uh, any, uh, potential problems and thinking about the, um, uh, appropriate changes that could help, uh, reduce those, the existing conflicts and any future conflicts. And that would include, by the way, evaluating the existing bus routes, some of which come to the, uh, to the site and connections to the commuter rail to try and create incentives for people to take commuter rail. Maybe there's a shuttle that the employees sponsor. Maybe we improve some bicycle connections so that new development does not necessarily automatically mean new cars for every single person involved. So with that, um, obviously, uh, as Rob mentioned at the beginning of the program, uh, or the beginning of this, uh, presentation, you're, uh, wanting to collect some more feedback, which we strongly, uh, uh, recommend. Um, and you'd be coming back to this in February, once you've, um, uh, made a decision one way, uh, or your, your decision on this plan, if you have any changes. Um, the next stage that we anticipate is the development of that urban renewal plan, which would not kick off until, uh, later. I just want to stress with that, that the state requires additional public participation. And so uh, what we would be, uh, considering, we've already discussed, is should that part go forward, that phase two go forward, um, we would be meeting with the business owners. Uh, we would be, uh, meeting with, uh, residents of the area. There would be some additional sort of general public meetings about the process so that I wanted to stress that the public engagement doesn't stop with the development of this land use plan. It goes into the urban renewal plan as well. Um, and we are crossing our fingers that, um, uh, the pandemic, will be at a state where maybe we can have some of those meetings in person. So because, uh, it's nice to have while it, while the Zoom has worked well for getting some people who might not be able to come to physical meetings. It's nice to add the physical meetings to the mix if we can do it. So with that, I'll stop, share, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Emily. Um, I appreciate that. Uh, again, for, uh, if, if we would take, um, questions from the board first, um, we would appreciate that. And then we'll open it up to, um, the attendees. And again, if you're an attendee and would like to, um, ask a question, please use the raise your hand function. So if you, um, hover your, your cursor down at the bottom of your screen, you should have a, a option for raise your, raise your hands. There's also a Q and A option, uh, which I will read your question into, um, uh, the record. And then, um, also, The record. And then um, also if you're on phone, uh, if you press star nine. I'm told that opens up uh, uh, is the same as raising your hand uh, on clicking. So um, I would ask if the board has any questions. I know this is not the first time that you have seen this. But if the board has any other questions before we open up to the public.
Yeah, Rob, I, I have a question. Uh, assuming everything, you know. Goes in that direction where, you know, we vote on it, we move forward, we get public input, we move forward. Uh, in a perfect scenario, when would you see? That first development starting with a timeline? Like, when would that be from, say, right now?
Um, I think that there is a good chance um, that our partners at um. Uh, Good Sam would be interested in, in something in the next eighteen months. Um, I know they are interested in making some new investments in the hospital. And this could fit very well into their um, their strategy. Um, as regards to the manufacturing um, facility. That is going to take a, a land acquisition strategy. Obviously, we don't own that. The B R A does not own that yet. But um. We need to um, also market the site. And uh, we have a strong relationship right now. With Mass Development and with the Mass Life Science Center. So. Uh, I think we could see something, you know, certainly in the eighteen months to three years. Fingers crossed. We're not an area that is known for life sciences. Um, however, we do have life sciences here. Uh, it, it's one of those hidden little secrets. Um, so if we call on those businesses that are here now. To learn about what their expansion plans are. And um, look at similar businesses in other communities, we might be able to attract them. Their expansions into Brockton, into these spaces. If we have this, the plan, if we have the zoning, if we have the land, if we have the incentives, if we have the infrastructure. So this is a, a long build. Long story, sorry.
I should also add to that, um, and back to the idea of these being conceptual plans is that. We use the, the plan view and the three D view to test how the buildings would fit on the site. It doesn't necessarily mean that buildings will be built in exactly those positions and exactly those uses. What we wanted to know is how would those uses live together on the site? What is a reasonable dimension for the different types of uses? Office dimensions are different from. Manufacturing dimensions are different from mixed use to the uh, um, dimensions. So these are ways, and that's one of the reasons we did um, uh, scenarios two and three is to test different positions. Uh, we'd actually looked at a scenario that flipped it and had the mixed use. Where the manufacturing is and the manufacturing where we're showing the mixed use. So this is one way of doing it, but it's not necessarily precisely how it will happen. What we wanted to know in the land use plan is how, how, how do those uses live together? And what are the public amenities and where could those go that come out of that?
I guess I have another question. Um, as far as the downtown um, tools from the state. Uh, are any of those transferable to a project like this, which is, you know, basically on the edge of stodden? Um, would the land acquisition techniques be applicable from the state or? Anything like that?
Um, yes, this area um, would qualify for a, a series of, of state incentives. Everything from um, uh, Mass Works, which is an infrastructure. Uh, granting uh, authority. Uh, it also would apply for what they call E V I P. And I think it's E D Economic Development Incentive Program. Which are state tax credits for development. Uh, there are special bio uh, incentives. Um, the state has a workforce training program that uh, we are qualified for. And um, there's, there's other um, credits and incentives that uh, we would certainly make available. Uh, uh, for, to attract development.
Awesome.
Hi, Emily. Um, really quickly, please. So I noticed on one of those plans. Um, that there was a brook sort of running through what is now seven eleven. And the laundromat. Um, and then there will be a path. Is that a walking path? And will that area be sort of? You know, green or can you just kind of go over that one more time?
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely. So that's the vision is that um, by moving the seven eleven. Um, and the laundromat. And again, we're hoping that. Many, if not all of these uses could actually stay on the site. They'd just be moved around. That we would be able to daylight Lovett Brook so that when it comes under the road. Um, it can open up and, and people realize that there's a brook there. It was interesting, the number of people who didn't know. Um, uh, that it was there. And then um, where possible, it could be moved out of its channels and that there'd be walking paths along it. Um, some of the wetlands would be restored. Some of where the brook is, people aren't going to go. There's a lot of wooded area kind of beyond Good Sam. Um, that, you know, people aren't necessarily going to walk all the way down that. We wouldn't encourage them to. But we'd like a network of paths that people would have access to. Um, and there's a possibility that there could be either easements or some of that could end up being public property. Um, as Rob mentioned about the um, uh, the acquisition process. So a combination of those to make sure that that was a community asset.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Naturally landscaped and maintained.
Yes, and lighting. Um, we talked about lighting. We talked about that wayfinding signage. Um, you know, we, we heard. Obviously, that there are people concerned that it was already a wooded area. Maybe they didn't feel comfortable in that area now. Uh, we also heard somebody used to go and fish in Lovett Brook and he was certainly interested. I think it was a he. I wasn't positive. Could have been a she. Um, uh, but you know, that they would uh, be interested in seeing that possibility again. So.
Any other board questions before I open it up to the public? Okay, with that, I am going to unlock Paul's microphone. So Paul, you can unmute yourself. And uh, you are free to talk about the country or ask questions.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I just wanted to take another look at, at one of the slides in the beginning. And it might have, might have been the third or fourth slide. Down the bottom of it, it had parking spaces.
Yes, I'm just pulling it up just one moment. Um, tell me if this is looking, let's see, one, two, three. Four, is this looking right?
You're getting there, I think.
Okay.
Keep going. It actually had like a, like a, a chart and a list of.
Oh, a chart.
There you go.
Oh, this wasn't parking spaces. This is square footage of, oh, sorry, parking spaces down at the very bottom. Yes, 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 yes.
Right. So right now, you're counting um, eighteen hundred and forty-six parking spaces in the area as it is right at the moment, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And so eventually that's going to go up. About two, about two hundred and then another two hundred or so or almost three and then another three hundred. So that's, that's what I was, yeah. So I, I, yeah, I just wanted. To um. Kind of, I guess emphasize the fact that if there are traffic conditions now, which you've, which you've acknowledged and pointed out. That uh, that need to be resolved as you go through all of these scenarios. Um, you know. Going up by about forty percent of parking spaces that are available in the area. Probably means going up about forty percent of the traffic problems. And the number of cars, um, even though there, there. There's always hope that people would bicycle and take buses and that sort of thing. Um, the worst case would be everybody drives a car. And um, it just sounds like it would be a uh. A bit of an issue that would need to definitely be addressed because of the. Uh, the, the scenarios that are there now in the various intersections. And um, the. Very high possibility of worsening those scenarios with that kind of an increase in the number of. Cars in and out of the area every day, especially in peak times. So that, that, that's all I wanted to point out and ask about.
I think it's an important question, Paul. Um, you know, it, it's been a concern we've heard throughout this process and I don't expect that concern to go away. Um, and it's one of the reasons, as Dan mentioned. For the requirement for a, a study to figure out, you know, as, as different projects come online, figuring out the. Impact of the individual project as well as the collective projects. I think it's also um, important to note, you know, we can, we can. Create the biking, we can create the, the shuttle and the transportation links. That's not going to take care of all of the cars. And also recognizing that. Um, uh, how people travel is very much. Changing in ways that we can't completely predict. So this idea of autonomous vehicles. Um, which, you know, if you'd asked us all twenty years ago, um, we'd all think was a pipe dream and sometimes uh. Seems to be happening faster than uh, any of us expected. Um, the ride sharing that's coming through. Uh, you know, so there's a lot of factors coming in here that need to be taken into account, kind of at every stage of development. So. Uh, I'm glad you brought that up in this conversation. You know, ideal situation. Some of the people living in the, the mixed use buildings are also working on site. Worst case, you're absolutely right. It's individual cars and it's where do we strike the balance between that ideal? You know, hope and um, and making sure that the reality is not that worst case scenario.
And one of the things about uh, improving the walkability of the site. As we were doing uh, the survey work. Uh, people from uh, Good Sam or from Harbor One would talk about, you know, running over to. Dunkin' Donuts, but they would have to get into their car to do that. It wasn't a, a pleasant walk. And so. By creating more of a neighborhood feel, I think that uh, some of that. You know, traffic issue which uh, will, will be mitigated. Not all of it, but it, it's uh. Uh, certainly an opportunity to, to look into that and to fix some things. Um, and have them paid for by development is um, you know, a way that we want to go.
If I could just throw in another couple, couple thoughts is with travel demand management. You know, a couple of other concepts that could work particularly well with light manufacturing. Is the idea of potentially having a shuttle that runs from downtown, you know, from the commuter rail to bring people to and from work. Uh, staggered work hours where the facility runs their operations with the intention of their peak. Not coinciding with the, the peak travel on the main roadways around the, around the site. So. There are several things that can be implemented in order to help to mitigate that in addition to the. You know, predicted improvements to the adjacent intersections.
I just had another couple of thoughts or just observations, I guess, on this chart. It, it looks like the um, the retail restaurant. Uh, I'm assuming that's square footage, maybe?
Yes, that's correct.
Is going from sixty-seven thousand square feet to eight thousand square feet? So where, where are those gonna go?
So that's the additional. Um, I thought, you know what? I had it on another slide. So let me, that is in addition. Now, the parking is not in addition. That's straight up, but the square footage is the additional square.
Oh, it's just additives. Okay.
Exactly.
Okay. And so the church is going away.
Well, in the test concepts. Yeah, because we're trying to see what would happen, but you know, the church could well stay in, um, you know, in. In the next stage that, that would be up to them and uh, their discussions with any future use. So.
All right. Just wanted to be sure I understand that, sure. Thank you.
And, and thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to just note that these are test scenarios for possibilities. Um, I think it's important to understand. So I appreciate that opportunity.
May I ask? May I ask? One more question?
Yes, please, go ahead.
On the long-term buildout, is there any consideration? I know how you had, you're starting to um, go over to the other side of the sidewalk, making Oak Street very walkable, double trees, all that. Uh, which looks very good. Is there any consideration to kind of expanding that to kind of head down to? D W and connect the walking space to, to D W Field Park?
Well, that's an interesting idea. Um, we hadn't considered that in. This scenario, but we might, um, Rob, maybe we take a look at. How that, how that could work at uh, in the next stages.
Um, yes, uh, the city does have a complete streets plan. Um, and the um, Campanelli Industrial. Uh, Drive and Oak Street is one of those intersections that we want to redevelop. And I could certainly see. Um, improvements made. Um, you know, from Route twenty-four all the way over to there. Um, and improving the walkability, especially since there's so many residential. Um, uh, units over in that area. And then expand, uh, expanding east on Oak, yes.
Hmm. I think it would be a nice tie-in, considering you do have a population that's utilizing that park already. Um, it might just kind of have a nice flow to it and, and be more attractive to those that do want to bike. And, you know, not, not risk their lives.
Yeah, those would be improvements that we could uh, hopefully put into Mayor Sullivan's new capital budget. Um, which hopefully will not be delayed by COVID this year.
Very good.
Oh, sorry. I have a quick question or like kind of suggestion. So. Um, so uh, I see that like there are a lot of surface parking area. It's like half of the site is almost covered. With like paved surfaces. So, um. Can we like, uh, can we think about um, like a parking structure or underground? Parking short of a thing so that we can avoid that kind of. You know, um, surface parking and that will definitely gonna reduce the heat island effect, right?
Emily, could you pull up um, the, the schematic for one C?
Yes. And then I would definitely like to address both of those. Hang on, I'm just coming up right now. Yes.
Uh, the next, uh, the actual, the aerial.
The aerial, yeah.
There, yeah. So um, you see the new office building square. Um, there and there's a large field of parking behind it. That could be discussed as a, a future parking structure. And eliminating some of the on-street or uh, surface parking. Um, that might be an arrangement uh, that works well for the hospital. Um, likewise, in front of the medical center. Um, right there, oh, right there, uh, is another potential location for structured parking, working with the hospital. Um, and that would, that would certainly create more developable space. And I think Emily's going to talk about the topography and the cost. So I don't want to steal her.
Was.
I'm not going to steal her thunder, but let, let's have her go through that.
So we did actually in um, scenarios two and three, which, which as I said, didn't make it in, we looked at putting in parking garages. Um, that would actually allow development to creep up. So there's, there's a significant slope change here. Um, it's one of the reasons that you don't see us putting a lot of buildings up here because the cost to do that. Um, is really high. So if all of this happened. And if the market value is such, you could see some buildings moving up and taking, as Harbor One does, um, advantage of the visibility from Route twenty-four. Um, uh, in which case parking garages would be needed. The reason that you don't see them on here is because the difference uh, of, of plain surface parking space. We usually use eight thousand dollars um, in cost for uh, per parking space for just a paved parking space. It's thirty thousand. Um, we used to use twenty-five thousand. Dan, I don't know if you're using higher than thirty thousand now. For an estimate, but what I do conceptual estimates, uh, I use about a standard thirty thousand dollars per parking space. And so in the initial pro form is that we did. This amount of development at the current construction cost and. Value that they would get isn't enough to justify surface parking. I tend to agree with you. Um, there's also a possibility that, you know, it would certainly address the heat island effect. It would add either more developable space or more green space. But it's not cost effective and the topography is part of that issue at this point. Another possibility would be to make some of the office lab or even the mixed use. You could consider podium parking there. In terms of the mixed use. You'd lose the green area on the side because obviously you'd have car access under there. Um, and you know, you could potentially put it under here. That's where you're starting to get into really thinking about pro, pro formas at a much more specific level. Than is required by a land use plan at sort of this level of planning. So, um, but. So, um, but, but that stands to your reasons. It's like, there's, there's really good reasons to do surface parking, but the physical and economic conditions aren't there at this stage. They might be there at a later date.
But, uh, I, I did want to point out that through our scenario planning, we kind of had that thought in the back of our head, where could this happen? Um, you know, as, as we head down that direction. And of course, we might all have, uh, self-driving cars by then that, uh, uh, go off and park themselves somewhere. Um, and we don't need that, that much parking to begin with.
The nice thing about flat surface parking is that it can always be changed into something else at a future date. So, you know, any one of these areas, as Rob mentioned, could, um, if needed, become a parking structure. Uh, you know, if the economics work out for that at a later date. So you're not losing by doing the surface parking now. It can also be restored to green area if you don't need it for some reason.
Big fan of green.
And how is the slope happening, uh, right now? Like it's from north to south or east to west?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of your question.
The slope, um.
Oh, um, it is from Route twenty-four sort of down going north and, north and west, basically. I don't unfortunately, let me just flip through quickly. I don't have a topographical map, but there is one.
It goes from southeast to northwest.
Yeah.
Yes, we imagine Good Samaritan kind of sits on a hill.
Okay.
You know, it slopes down to Oak Street from there.
It's great for skateboarding.
Rob, just, Rob, just a side note, Larry lost power, he's trying to log in if, if you see him trying to get back in.
Okay, I think some other people have lost power also. Um, are there any other attendees who would like to ask questions? Please, um, use the raise your hand function or press, um, star nine if you're on the telephone. And then you can also use the Q and A, um, question answers. We're also keeping this open. Um, so if you want to submit, uh, emails to planning@cobma.us. And I have a, a caller on the phone and, um, caller on the phone, I'm going to unlock you. But if you would please identify yourself, um, so we know for the meeting minutes who we're speaking with, I'd appreciate it. So caller, you are.
My, my name is Janet Lannon. I'm, I'm on eight oh two Oak Street.
Oh, yes ma'am.
Yes, um, I, I'm sorry, I couldn't join by Zoom, I tried logging in, but I couldn't get in. Um, yes, um, I'm still, I'm, I'm just wondering if we're going to get like some type of notices when all this starts really coming to fruition? Um, besides just having the meetings and, you know, as soon as we hear, are we going to be hearing something or getting something in the mail? To when this is going to be starting?
Are, are you talking about construction starting or the next phase of planning?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
I would think that there would be a lot more public meetings and notice. Um, once we get closer to a public stage, um, certainly, um, we're going to be working with the new ward counselor, Tom Minicello. Um, he just took, um, took office this Monday.
Yes, I bought it from.
Hey, good. Um, so, um, you know, as projects pop up, we'll be looking at them as individual projects and there's going to be much more participation as we go on piece by piece. This is kind of setting the table cloth. And then when each, um, guest sits down, we'll then have, um, detailed conversations about those guests. If that's a.
That's.
Sticking with my dinner metaphor, metaphor.
Yes, um, so you will be having, um, hopefully we'll have some in-person meetings soon.
Oh God, I hope so.
Yeah, that would be really good, yeah. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lynn, thank you. Um, and Lisa, I am going to unlock you. Oops. Oh, actually Lisa, I am going to have to move you to a panelist temporarily. And that will unlock your, um, you have an older version of Zoom. So you should be as a panelist now. Um, Lisa, if you want to unlock your microphone and.
There we go, sorry about that, I, I must need to update my, uh, Zoom, uh, Zoom app. Anyhow, I, I guess after that last caller, how much of this is conceptual? Is all of this conceptual? Are there any manufacturers or drug pharmaceuticals or offices or multifamilies on board at all? Or is this just a big plan that we're hoping will happen someday?
Um, I would say that we're at the setting the table stage. Um, there are some, uh, development opportunities with Good Samaritan. Um, and, and we certainly want to explore those. But, um, we need to have, you know, the, the plan and the zoning and all of those things kind of in place before we go out and start shopping. But it's not as if we have somebody, you know, in mind that we're going to talk to. Uh, and as soon as this is passed, they're gonna, you know, this whole thing's going to explode. Um, it, it's going to be a long process, uh, to get this going. Cause the, the Brockton is kind of a hidden gem on the life science, um, scene. We have these firms here, but you wouldn't know that they're here. Uh, you know, un- unless you had done some, some, some studies. Actually, the MIT study that, uh, was done for the Mass Life Science Center and Mass Development identified firms that we had no idea were here because they don't, they're under different trade names. Um, but they're here, we've got a great STEM program at Brockton High School. Um, and it just kind of makes sense to work with the businesses that we have to help them grow, to create more jobs for Brockton residents. And you need to kind of have a place for them to go in order to do that. So it's, it's setting the table.
Sure, but nobody's on board yet. And will it be like a marketing plan? Is, uh, are we going to reach out to these businesses and ask them to come here? Or is it just, you know, we're going to hope somebody will come by?
Well, actually, um, if this plan is approved in February, um, our hope is to, um, then begin another round of planning. But we also have brought on a, uh, uh, professional, a senior planner, uh, John Fay, uh, who is an MIT graduate and actually worked with the group that developed the original plan. And he's in my office now, we're doing some, uh, industrial analysis and we plan on actually going and creating a, uh, Brockton Life Science Council. So to bring all those CEOs and plant managers that we already have in Brockton together. And we then start developing a plan on how they can expand and how they can bring their customers into Brockton. So that's, that's phase two A.
Phase two A. Um, no, I just wondered because I agree with you, Brockton is a hidden gem. And if things are done right, this could be a great city. It's never made sense why things are the way they are.
And I've got to say with the ceiling fan behind you, you get this.
No, I know.
You get a halo over your head.
Here, let me switch here. There we go, is that better? Ah, here.
Ah, a little bit better, don't worry about it, don't worry about it.
Yeah. There, that might be a little better. So the halo's gone.
A little less angelic, yes.
Should I have horns? Anyway.
Lisa, one of the things that we did to, um, the, the consulting team is structure the land use plan so the city could use it as a marketing document. So you've seen the brief presentation and I should say I will put up at the end, um, the website. But the full land use plan has a lot of the information that developers would be looking for in it. And it's specifically so the city can take it and say, here, we have a plan that we're working on, um, to, uh, to make this.
Come check us out.
Exactly.
Exactly, okay, no, it's a great step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
And actually, Rob, I'm just going to share the website real quick while you load up any other questions.
And if there are any other questions, uh, we're wrapping up at an hour right now. Um, that is the website where we're running the project on. And of course, uh, you can send any questions via email to planning@cobma.us. And, uh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading note. Oh, yes, and, um, uh, you know, we'll, we'll read those comments into the record. And hopefully on, uh, Thursday, uh, February, uh, the February board meeting, we will be adopting this plan. So I want to thank you all for participating, uh, this evening and, uh, being a part of Brockton's future. So with that, um, I think Madam Chair got disconnected. So if Larry would entertain from a board member a motion to adjourn.
The motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, I'll take that over, I'm not a board member, go ahead. Uh, it looks like the motion carried, thank you very much, people. Have a great evening and, uh, enjoy little Christmas tomorrow.
Good night.
Good night.
Hi, thank you.
Good morning, thank you.